No, that, that might have been from way back in the June, when it was fired and they agreed to go on the hundred twenty. Now they ask out of me because I remember he was coming down the place from my old Yeah, I wasn't sure about the turn or anything. And good. Everybody stayed on the track. We don't stay on these folks. He's certainly not going to have any answers like Westside.
Yeah. Brooks needs to break the leg good now.
Yeah, he may be on his way. When I come around the river, they were hauling two pieces of double I mobile haulers. It's a mess. They had one stop down here. I know he had a flat. I think he was having to lower it to go into the bridges. He stopped right at Woodbridge right there. Right in the hole. He stopped right there when he saw the sign. He walked load widers and twelve freighter or whatever. And he might have had to go pick another route.
Yeah, this one was, both of them were running in the middle of the lane. And the guy up front was there stopping traffic up front. But it's just a mess.
Well, I'm betting he got here and couldn't get through where they're building the bridge.
I do. Oh, yeah. It's like picking it up now. Yep.
This prayer. Most kind gracious followers, this is paid for and often the blessing of the Lord. God has this prayer that you can continue to be with our family. The Lord, I pray that you believe that country is now a nation of the people. God, I pray that you believe each year will be some issues that we can raise and deal with. May we always live in the name of your worship. Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, we are proud and we wish to say that we are a nation of the people.
Brooke. Eric Brooks. Abby Davis. Daniel Deal. D.B. Esma.
Here.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
There.
John Pippen.
Here.
Samantha Trancom.
Here.
And James Witty.
Here.
All right. Approval of minutes of previous meetings. So we will meet in the same.
Motion to approve unapproved minutes. Say.
Motion made by Pivenger, second by Kinsey. Brooke. Or any discussion? Brooke. D.B. Esma.
Here.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. And James Witty.
Yes.
Approval of reports in office.
Motion to approve. Say.
Motion made by Pivenger, second by Pivenger. D.B. Esma.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Approved both.
Um, next is approval of notaries. We've got a few. Um, Carmen Bethany Stewart of Old Ford. She works at First Volunteer Bank in Benton. Second is Pam Rogers of Benton, Tennessee. She works at First Volunteer Bank. Robin Lee Monroe of Oakwood. She works for the U.S. Census Bureau of Oakwood. Next is Charlene Elizabeth Black of Belleno. She works for Whitmore Mobile Homes in Belleno. Next is Trending Nicole Wilson of Belleno. She works for Whitmore Mobile Homes. Next, we have Brett Jacob Curtis of McAsville, working at Akins Freedom Home in Copper Hill. And Dorinda Akins-Cop of Blue Ridge, working at Akins Freedom Home in Copper Hill.
Motion to approve of notaries. Say.
Motion made by Woody, second by Kinsey. Any discussion? Brooke. D.B. Esma.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom. Yes. And James Witty.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have budget amendments. Um, we have three. And they're all out of 101 general. First count from line four, six, three, one, zero. Some health departments for seventy-five thousand going into line five, five, one, one, zero, dash, seven, zero, seven for local health center and building improvements. Seven is the Sheriff's Department coming out of line three, four, five, two, five. And of ninety-eight hundred for public restricted public safety. And two other supplies and maintenance, line one, zero, one, dash, five, four, two, three, zero, dash, four, nine, nine. And number eight is out of line three, nine, zero, 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 undesignated for forty-two, ninety-one. And to line five, one, zero, eight, zero, zero, dash, five, one, three, for county building workers comp.
Motion to approve these three, six, seven, and eight budget amendments.
Motion made by Woody, second by Esma. Any discussion?
Thomas.
D.B. Esma.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Next on our agenda was the agriculture grant. Um, Debbie just asked that we table that, but God wasn't ready. Next is parks and wrecks.
We thought we were going to have some, a request on that that's not been taken care of. The, you dealt with the, uh, the changeover request, um, the funds, uh, with the water, run the, uh, water fountains, uh, that couldn't be done. Uh, so it's part of that project from grant that couldn't be done. It's been changed over. Uh, the volleyball, uh, field that, uh, they were working on that has been completed. And is being, well, the sod's being watered now and should be ready for spring play. That's at Hammond's Park, uh, the natural, that's it.
Next is the dump.
Commissioner Piveger was in the office the other day right before we were setting the agenda and asked that, uh, just put it on there, just kind of let everybody know, uh, with and how, what, uh, had transpired. Uh, Walter had got it in the Pocono view last week. There was notification by, um, trying to figure out how to get this exactly. He overseen the land, the property owner. Uh, the property owner is a very well-known prospective lawyer. And I'm a bit more concerned with that. Uh, but anyhow, so the property overseer went out and noticed that, uh, there was a large amount of trash on top of the property owner's property. And which he did have these satellite trail cams. What'd you say they're called, John?
Uh, sack cams.
Sack cams, what I understand is what it is. And so that was very instrumental in being able to determine. Uh, it was also found out that whenever I went to the South Pole dump site and talked to Hoyt Clements, this person did in fact have Bradley County tags. Tried to bring it to the South Pole dump site and they were told proper way to be able to dispose the trash. Said they were coming into my office to do that. Went down to the first road on the right, turned right, went quarter mile, turned left and went back to the back of Clements. Threw it out. So myself and Mr. Loftie paid him a visit. And you may ask, why was there not fines? Why was there not all these other things? They had some small children and whenever we pulled up, one of the first things they asked if we were there to take them away. So the property owner, because it was on private property, it wasn't on county side. But the property owner had asked that they done and cleaned it up. And then he would think about if he was going to press charges or not. So they were instructed by Mr. Loftie to do so. They were also told that they would have to take, it was Pocono and Bradley County trash. But the tag was a Bradley County tag. So they had been hauling trash from Bradley County, cleaning out things as well as from their house. So we instructed them to take that to the nearest dump site or landfill to bring a tip sheet into my office where they had disposed of that the proper manner. Then they could prove that they were Pocono residents and they wouldn't have this problem in the future. So, uh, they have not came into my office yet. They've not made any attempt to come into the office, but they did go back in which, when Mr. Loftie and I, after he gave them the twenty-four hours to clean it up, the property owner, who is a lawyer, met us there and was ecstatic. Uh, it was cleaned to the bare ground. They even cleaned stuff that they didn't bring in because this was a site that had been dumped on private property before. So that, um, I appreciate everybody's hand in it from, from the sanitation workers to, you know, to Mr. Loftie himself. And it just proves that the things that the commission has set forth, you follow the proper procedures, you're more than welcome to bring your trash into Pocono. But the dump worker done what he was instructed to do. Whenever I went to him, he asked me if he was in trouble. I told him, Lord, no, I'm going to go buy him a meal because he done what he was supposed to do. He couldn't help it that the person decided to go and throw their trash out on somebody else's property. That's just a brief update with that. And all right. And Walter and I was at another spot today, uh, that was brought to our attention where some culverts have been disposed of. And I really believe we've got that cleaned up and in the process of being cleaned up.
Did they want?
Yes, to my knowledge, yes, they do.
Yeah, they would.
We're, we're, we've not determined yet if it came off, I'll just say it, if it came off for service length. Uh, and they decided, maybe they had a contractor come to replace these sixteen, eighteen inch concrete tiles, three foot sections and then, yeah. Very nice tiles.
None of us was doing away.
No.
Got to be good for it.
Hopefully, uh, in the near future though, we'll see more of this. And it's all about people getting involved and doing things. And I'm very grateful for Mr. Daley. I will say his name, he was the property overseer. But, uh, they've really got this all initiated through those sack cams. Any question?
Well, our next one is ambulance update.
Ambulance update. There is a resolution that I have handed to Ms. Trancom. And this resolution, sorry to make you into your packets. Uh, county attorney got it to me the day after your package was out. But there are two resolutions there. One of them is to enter into the contract with CareMed, um, which you all were the ones that accepted that bid and went forward. It's just given me the authority to sign and go into that contract or if they can't be going into that contract. The other is a resolution for them to go ahead and occupy building C, in which they already started the moving process, moving into it. There will be a shower installed into the bathroom area, um, that they're going to be using. And that's the only requirement that they asked of in that building C. Their ambulances were supposed to be delivered Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken. But they did not make Tuesday. The reason being is because the plant where they were coming off the lines had thirty-two or thirty-six workers that had the COVID. And so it did delay it just a little longer and then the graphics to be put on for the ambulance. They are on route in, or on the truck en route to their station right now in Alabama. So they should be in Pocono Tuesday. That's what I found out from Mr. Stan about four thirty, five o'clock when I talked to him today.
How many days in are we right now to the new contract of?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, sir. Let's, we start first.
Well, like I said, those are the two resolutions.
First resolution is ten, dash, one, dash, twenty. A resolution, one, approving the agreement to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance services between CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC and Pocono, Tennessee. And two, authorizing and directing the county executive to execute said agreement behalf of Pocono, Tennessee. Whereas Pocono accepted the bid submitted by CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance services for the county. Whereas the Pocono County Commission and CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC have reviewed the agreement to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance services and agreed to the terms and conditions set out therein. Now therefore be resolved by this legislative body in session assembled that, A, the agreement to provide emergency and non-emergency ambulance services between Pocono, Tennessee and CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC is approved and, two, the county executive to authorize and direct, to execute said agreement on behalf of Pocono, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that this resolution take effect from and after its passage. The public welfare required it this fifteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution ten, one, twenty. Say the motion.
Approval by Pivenger, second by Woody. Any discussion?
Just a little, just a couple of follow-ups. And I apologize for not asking you on the way up if you're on the other side. Now, this, this motion, uh, this resolution, from what I can understand, it's not an exclusive. They didn't, they've not asked for an exclusive agreement, uh, on, uh, service yet. Strictly exclusive, AMR had one, uh, at one point. Making them the only provider. They've not went that long, on. The way that I understand with CareMed, what they done was is they looked at all the calls that had came in to the county and that's what they based out. Based it off, okay. So it would be my understanding that, that they would be looking to be the only provider. Because that's, I do know that I have asked them if, uh, maybe right here because Eric was talking as far as like the cities, the city can go out and do as they choose, I think that's. Yeah. And they said that they looked at all the call volume based off the cat report that they were given. Right. That was why they submitted to be a base meeting.
I've kept in touch, uh, and I know Chairwoman Trancom has, and I'm sure the other commissioners have too, with, uh, Mr. Grayson of CareMed. And, and, uh, well, Stan, Stan, I can't remember his, Alfred, Alfred. Uh, they have, uh, there was some worry about them getting certified in time for the, the contract start date. Uh, they did get their state certification, uh, which there was some that thought they could not do it that quick. But they, they did get the state certifications, agency called Tennessee. Uh, the ambulances that are on the road have been certified by the state, signed off on, uh, and I asked you coming up here on certification, uh, this one up here is ALS certified equipped.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the one up here now is a van-framed model. That will be changing, I'm understanding, very shortly when these new ones come in. We knew that there was a transition phase or a hybrid phase coming in of, of about three weeks. And right now they seem to still be on the calendar, uh, proceeding. Everything seems to be in order as it was laid out in the contract. The one thing I would throw in there is, uh, like for the commission to remember that we did keep the option of one option, one only being open the way the motion was made. And it may be that we need to look at further. We had a lack of one day. I believe when these two come on here today, it will, uh, take care of the majority of that, but it's something to keep in mind. If I figure out where the money's going to come from.
Are we going to pay them for the full month this month?
They went into contract with understanding that there was a three-week hybrid. I don't know, have you talked to them anything on, uh, anything the first month or?
I've not talked to them as far as the payment. They did send a bill out. The way they bill is they bill for the month at the first of the month.
Okay.
I have billed that check. It's, it's still sitting there because the way AMR billed, they billed at the end of the month. And so we had just paid the AMR bill and that, that came across my office today. And I asked the lawyers to hold that check. So it is currently held right now. I didn't talk to Stan about that. Whenever I talked to him about this other, and around five o'clock today. But, uh, but no, as of right now, they're, they've not been paid, but they do bill for the month. And the first of the month, I said at the end.
You know, like I said, we did, we did say they would be the hybrid power of, of three weeks. And, uh, it looks like it's going to be right on about three weeks for that contract fulfillment. That, that's all I have, Mr. Trancom.
Any more discussion?
Yes, sir.
Brooke.
Sir.
Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D.B. Esma.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Next is resolu- resolution ten, dash, two, dash, twenty. A resolution, one, approving a commercial lease agreement for Unit C of the Medical Park at the Copper Basin Medical Center between Pocono, Tennessee and the City of Ducktown landlord and CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC tenant. Two, authorizing the county executive to execute the commercial lease agreement on behalf of Pocono, Tennessee and authorizing the county executive to execute and provide the above-named tenant with written consent or approval on behalf of Pocono, Tennessee on matters set out in the commercial lease agreement that require written consent or approval from Pocono, Tennessee. Whereas Unit C of the Medical Park at the Copper Basin Medical Center is currently vacant. Whereas CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC is current ambulance service provider for Pocono, Tennessee. Whereas CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC has agreed to lease Unit C of the Medical Park at the Copper Basin Medical Center to the terms and agreement of the commercial lease agreement. Now therefore be it resolved by the legislative body in session assembled that, one, the commercial lease agreement with CareMed EMS of Tennessee LLC for Unit C of the Medical Park at Copper Basin Medical Center is approved. Two, the county executive is authorized to execute commercial agreement on behalf of Pocono, Tennessee. Three, the county executive is authorized to execute and provide the above-named tenants with written consent and, or approval on behalf of Pocono, Tennessee on matters set out in the commercial lease agreement that requires written consent or approval from Pocono, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that this resolution take effect and, from and after its passage. The public welfare required it this fifteenth day of October, two thousand twenty.
Make a motion to approve. I'll say.
Motion made by Dale, second by Pivenger. Any discussion?
What's the arrangement, sir? On the, uh, transfer of money? Any, what are, are we, we're giving them that building part of the deal or? No, they're paying rent. They're going to pay rent. Yeah, they're paying rent. They've already put their security deposit down for one month's rent. They've already paid a month's rent upfront. Is this the same contract you got with the other doctors? This, this is the same contract that you've all approved at the same rate. Everybody's on the same. So if we sold it, they'd have to. Correct, it's all the same. Right. Yes, everything gets, yes, that everything is the same. It's, it's the same lease agreement, I think. That way there's no actual money that changes because it'll really get in there. No, no subtraction from the services that we've paid to them. They paid us and we paid them.
And then right into, into the business.
Yes. So they just, they agreed to come in and do, they only asked that they be able to put a bathroom in in which they're going to hire, um, I can't remember the guy's name, but he is a resident of the county, to my knowledge. And he's going to be putting that panel on shower in at the side of the bathroom.
Is that cost going to be to be on me?
On me.
Any more discussion? Brooke. Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D.B. Esma.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
Any, um, that's, any announcements or statements?
There's, there's one item that we always take care of in October. And, uh, no one put it on the agenda, but we always reappoint the attorney in October. And I request that we, uh, suspend the rules for that one thing.
I'll say that the, you made a motion to suspend James.
Yes.
I'll say the motion.
Motion made by Woody to suspend, second by Pivenger. Any discussion? And Brooke.
Yeah, it's got to have, uh.
Brooke. Daniel Deal.
Yes.
D.B. Esma.
No.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pippen.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
And James Witty.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint, uh, Eric Brooks as county attorney.
I'll say that, um, does anybody remember how many, uh, several majority or two-thirds it takes to suspend the rules on the agenda?
What? Takes two-thirds.
Takes two-thirds to suspend rules. That means it takes six, that's some members, not members present. What was the role called? Suspension.
Five, one.
Five, one.
Five, one. Withdrawn, I second.
Court. Our, let's do our announcements and statements. Anybody got anything?
Just wanted to ask the county clerk put, uh, appointment of county attorney on the agenda for next month.
John, I'm just curious, you brought up the contract being exclusive. Is there some run lanes and event lanes they want to go out on their own, the ambulance now? Okay.
No, uh, we come across that, uh, mid, uh, mid-trans during the AMR.
Transition.
Yes, uh, AMR wanted the county, but wanted an exclusivity, uh, and it's, those are the first ones that had it to be the only, just viable for another company to come in and run convalescing. And there was some issue, uh, with the company. I'd rather, but there's a company that was interested in that same contract at the time, who does a lot of convalescing. in that same contract at the time, who does a lot of convalescent calls only in, in other cities.
Now, there's a company out of Fannie County that's just running convalescent, too.
And, and that was because that takes a great portion of providers.
And I'd mentioned it to Sam when the Copper Hill Councilman fell up in arms about ambulance service Monday night at their meeting, too. And that's why I was asking.
I believe it was, I believe it was Angel at that time that was looking into this plan. And that was out of Chairman, I think.
Yeah, this guy's based right there in Fannie County, and he's just, actually works for the regular ambulance service, but then he saw the, he saw an opening and bought an ambulance and started running convalescent.
And usually you have that whole board, like when hospitals open, or when you have four or five assisted living or assistance homes in your, in your county, but AMR had it patented down, anywhere they went, they wanted that contract. So I, I didn't know if CareMed had approached this yet. I think the company, what company when that whole thing happened? AMR come in, it was Medtrans?
Med.
Or is that the last?
I care.
Okay, I care, but I'm tracking through the cities. Medtrans went to I.
There was a Metro and I.
Royal Metro. When Medtrans come in? Medtrans was pre-I care. I care took over Medtrans. Right. And, and that, that contract was exclusive with, with AMR as to the point that AMR had the county agreement for emergency, that which is going to be compared with. So that, that was, you know, that was a question that I'm sure CareMed will probably be.
Though it's something I'm sure somebody had won, I just didn't know if it was.
It's just extra protection to you provide.
So if they meet what they promised in three weeks, we'll go ahead and pay them for the whole month. Is that what we said?
That's kind of my understanding, and I'm, I'm not, that's the so-called, that's negotiations with Robbie, he had to go in and negotiate this board. That's kind of my understanding. We understood they'd be in three weeks, but Robbie needs to talk to them on that, or.
And I'd like to say this morning, or that came through, and I held it, just simply because, I won't say. I mean, like I said, and the checks on, I mean, I, I did go ahead and sign it, but I have not, and I won't say.
Because like I said, they, and I do, and I'm like John, I, I do understand, and I understand with, with the COVID and, you know, things happening in that facility where it was held up at, but they were, you know, talking to them about every two, three days. You know, we were really on track for that, and so I would really like to see those other two ambulances be on twenty-four seven and then going forward. I do know that they, Wes sent me the, the CAD reports, and there has been different mutual aid, and Jamie, I'm sure, will testify to that. There've been different ones that's filled in, there've been some different things, there have been some calls at ten, eleven o'clock at night, different stuff that's going on my end. So, but to my knowledge, and if I'm wrong, did somebody tell me I'm wrong, but from what I've understood from all of them, as well as from Wes, there's not been anybody that was not careful. And it may not have been a five-minute run, it may have been twenty minutes, it may not have been twenty minutes, it may have been thirty minutes to forty-five minutes, but with the exception of one that was told, it may be a little while before an ambulance gets here and they decided they'd go ahead and take the person themselves. Right, John?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding, that's my opinion.
So they are meeting, I do see, and I do see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But also I do see that they, they are meeting with what they have. It's just I'd like to see that those other two ambulances am up before I let that check go. Now, if you as a committee or a commission tells me, no, you go ahead and pay them, I'll, I'll tell the girl to mail that tomorrow, I see a lot of heads. So if you agree with me, I mean, if you get calls one on one, they can get paid yet, I, I just wait, I'd like to see that fourth ambulance, or all four of the ambulances before I do release that check. So I'll take care if you agree with me. But it is a signed check, it is on my, on the girl desk, just as soon as that's made. And like I said, they said that they would be here, those would be here this week. And I was with them last week when the furniture was delivered to their location on the west side. Those, those were delivered and, and put in, so they do have the, what was it, the old chiropractor building on the west side of the county? What is it, chiropractor building? It down from the two years old, rest right on the lot. Yeah. Whenever, first time I told people that, it's like, it's a beauty shop, no, it's on the other side of Reagan's. So, but that, that is where they are at now. But, and they, they do think that it'll work real good, and they did say building C was a lot more than what they needed, which is the same thing that AMR said, Jamie said that as well. Whenever AMR looked at building C. It's, it's a lot more room than what we really needed, but it will work, it will work.
Well, they're still providing the service, so I mean, we're getting our money for it. I mean, money's worth.
Correct, but I would just like to see.
They're, they're just not up to the full option three grantorship.
Four ambulance, that's twenty, four ambulance.
They told us that before they.
Correct.
Signed up.
Correct, but, and most of the time, I think everybody would agree, you, you do your service and then you get your payment at the end. And it just struck me as odd this week whenever that sixty thousand dollar payment was to be at the first of the month.
Uh, the twenty-second will be their three-week month. That's gonna be that, that's next Thursday.
Well, is that the way they, they wanna do it all the time, or is it?
That's the way they do it, is they bill, they bill the first of the month to provide through the month. I guess kind of like whenever you rent a house from somebody, you know, you're, and you, you want your money before they go through, whereas, as pay the bills. Correct, but also the county and the way we had been structured and set up, which Jamie, or Jamie will testify to that, we do everything and then it goes through and the end of the month payment. So we, we had to do this or it would give us an audit finding because we can't bill out if we don't have it going through the office, so. But it will be taken care of unless, like I said, unless you as a commission tell me that, turn it to them tomorrow, I'll give it to them tomorrow, but if not, I'm, I am gonna hold it until the fourth ambulance hits the county. Sounds like a flame, dude. And another announcement, don't forget about the tree and tree at the courthouse on the thirty-first. This will be the second annual, it's gonna be moved to the courthouse. If you've got a booth or a spot, or if you want to come and do, be sure to come out and be a part of that. I believe everybody would agree that our kids are the ones that suffered throughout all this, and it's a chance for a little bit of normalcy. Melissa's putting this on, so if you can come out and be a part of it. I know Jackie's planning the Christmas tree lighting for.
December fifth.
December the fifth. I know I've, I've had different ones ask about Santa Claus coming to town. I'm still holding out because I don't know that Santa Claus wants to plug the kids up in his lap, and so we might have to postpone that just because you can't see Santa Claus in social distance, I don't care who you are, that Robert go for Christ, and so, but there's these things that are going on in the county, they're part of it.
Jackie, did, did y'all decide to do the whole event like you did last year?
Yes, we are gonna have booths.
Booths and all, for booth vendors and?
Yeah, everybody's wanting to do it, so I'm like, okay, I'll do it.
I've been asked several times.
If they wanna do it, I'll do it. I didn't have anybody say no. Whenever I ask it on Facebook, if they would like to have booths around, you know, the tree like we did last year, they were all yes.
And you've got another section of tree this year.
I do, it's gonna be eighteen-foot tree this year. That's why I'm excited to get it together. It's gonna be the old tree. And that's as tall as they can go, guys, so.
You can't, you can't get another section.
No.
So that's, you popped it out. That's good size tree.
Then we'll start one up here next. I'm gonna discuss with the guy that I got this one from about getting another one, so I'm gonna get with some of the businesses up here, just like we did down there. Everybody's got donations, and that's what it's been paid for, group donations.
Now, Brooks.
Yep, I'm gonna get one up here.
Hey, we, we decided down here, if you could have a duck and booth and put Brooks in, we can all kind of lay credit.
Hey, I'll do that.
Pippinger, I'll start off five hundred plates, won't I?
You got it. Hey, I've got that on the recorder, by the way.
That's fine. As long as John do his part, I'll do mine.
I'd like to introduce Matthew Cole, who's with us tonight. He's from the Glimski, if any of you haven't met him, he's with us tonight.
This is appropriate of a, a public comment, but when we get there, I'd be happy to comment. Or I could comment now.
This is, this announcement.
Yeah, this is an.
Well, I, I just wanna say how much we, and I work with the Kaysville Properties, we've got a number of buildings in Polk County, the Malute Building, Copper Curve, and others, and we just appreciate so much everything the county does to support Copper Hill, to support the area. You know, and, and I know it's a big county, but, but we just appreciate the attention that we get. And if y'all want to come over at any time, talk with us, you know, give my number, my contact, and just happy to, to talk about how we can help the county. We're all about trying to find ways to get back. One of the things we're doing in my position, a lot of things fall on my shoulders, the most recent one is, is gonna be a, a race. We're gonna have to cut through Copper Hill and Kaysville. First time there's ever been a five K, it kind of cuts through his city, both cities to my knowledge. And from what I've been able to find out, we are the only five K in the country that goes to two states. So it's gonna be kind of fun, that's gonna be on Halloween morning. Y'all are welcome to come, it's called the Bigfoot Boogie. And so, anyway, be happy to talk to offers, but again, just thank y'all for everything that you do, appreciate it.